Can have a much more relaxed meeting than those that are waiting anxiously here. So, we have no one waiting in the courthouse right now.
Uh, yep, and I do have one of my appraisers at the door, just in case anybody comes in, he'll walk them in as they.
Okay. Perfect. If you could give me a ping if someone does show up, that'd be outstanding.
Absolutely.
Okay, and as a reminder to those of you online, if you are not presenting, please mute your line, we'll be starting the meeting in about a minute. Yeah, I don't see Commissioner Sherling. There it is. Is that Mary Sherling right there? Yeah, that is.
No, do is on. Can I?
Commissioner Pollock is on. Commissioner Breitling is on. Okay. We will wait for Commissioner Sherling. She was just in the prior meeting, so she's here and she's available, and she has, as we all do repeatedly throughout the days that have been preceding this meeting, so we'll wait ever so patiently for Commissioner Sherling. I will actually text.
Chad, did you hear, Commissioner, uh, did you hear my conversation with Heather that we do not need retroactive approval?
Yes. I mean, theoretically, we would... There she is.
I, I mean, I certainly appreciate that, that we didn't talk about that.
No, I just did what I thought I was supposed to.
No, that's much appreciated.
All right. Commissioner Breitling, Commissioner Pollock, and Commissioner Sherling, all on board. It is a pleasure here. I think that's Mike's desk right there, isn't it? It is. That's Mike's.
Yes, it is.
Okay, with that, I think, are we ready, everyone? Okay, with that, ready? At this time, I would like to call the June 1st, 2020. That's kind of the commission meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
I am here.
Dean?
Here.
Pollock?
Here.
Sherling?
I am here. Could you resend that link? It's not on my computer, so I just have it on my phone. Thanks.
And Breitling?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you, everyone. We are in the commission chambers, so I'm going to ask for a political release, please, Ms. Ward, if you'd lead us. Thank you, Ms. Ward. Commissioners, I presume you've had a chance to review a prior meeting minutes, and so I'd look for a motion to approve or amend, please. Almost, is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Terry, should I wait? Commissioner Sherling, should we wait a second?
Just wait.
Remobilized.
Hello.
Um, go ahead. I don't know if you can hear me.
Okay, yep, we can hear you. I just wanted to make sure that you can hear us. That's...
Yeah, I can hear you. Just doing it on my phone.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, we can. Not sure who you are.
Oh, this is Wayne Cannonbaum with Pivotal Tax.
Oh, okay. If you would, sir, we'll get to your portion of the meeting. If you'd mute your line until we do, I would be grateful.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, with that, order of agenda, we have a couple of amendments. We had some excitement over the weekend, which I'm sure you're aware of, as well as a special event permit for Border Town Grill and Bar, or Bar and Grill. Look for a motion to amend with consent agenda, item E, for the special event permit, which we always, pretty much always, but most often than consent. And then within the regular agenda, Mr. Wilson and I, under item 3B, will discuss the weekend's events. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Steen?
I move that we approve the order of the agenda with the addition of a special event permit to the consent agenda and retroactive approval of an emergency declaration for civil unrest to the regular agenda as follows. Consent agenda, item E, special event permit for Border Town Bar and Grill. Item 3B on the regular agenda, emergency declaration for civil unrest. Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Consent agenda, as we just discussed, we have that. I presume everyone's had a chance to review. We have the consent agenda, so look for a motion to approve or amend. A moves. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second, and thank you. Any, any discussion on the consent agenda? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Sherling?
Yes.
Motion approves. Thank you, everyone. This is time for public comment. If you are not on the agenda right now, and you're in the meeting, we're addressing the commission, now's the time to speak. I don't see anyone hustling for a microphone, virtually or otherwise. So, with that, we will move on to the regular agenda. I want our agenda to convene the Board of Taxation, or the Board of Equalization. At this time, I would like to convene the County Board of Tax Equalization. Mr. Ficazzi, I presume you're still with us? I see you right there, so you must be. Unmute your mic accordingly, and get us up to speed, please, sir.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Peterson, and fellow members of council. Today, I'm just going to give a briefing on our 2020, or our 2019 year review on what we're expecting to see for assessments going into the 2020 year here. Along with that, after I finish this briefing, I'll, I'll give a, a short summary of what we're hoping to accomplish today, and then we'll get into any, any of the appeals. So, I'm going to share my screen here, and... And we kind of went over this a little bit before, but I'd like to go over this again in, in some detail.
Commissioners, I presume we can see Mr. Ficazzi's presentation?
I can, so... Okay.
Please continue. Thank you.
Yep. So, going into 2020, our projected taxable value forecast county, and that's including all cities, is $973,165,000. This is up five and a half percent from last year. Our office, when we go out and do our individual assessments, are responsible for all the jurisdictions in Katz County outside of Fargo and West Fargo. Those are the cities and jurisdictions and townships that make up our sales ratio that, um, that we have to maintain those tolerance levels for the state, or the state tolerance levels for both areas. When you, when you take that out of the Fargo-West Fargo assessments, the taxable value of rural Katz County is $163,4237. So, from a mill standpoint, we're looking at about, one mill is at about $973,000 projection for this year. Um, there was a lot of work completed this year for review by our office. Every year, we do reappraisal work, and, uh, you know, this year is no different than any of the others. We completed the reassessment of Horace, which was a big project for us. That was actually a two-year project that the city and the county both contracted together with the assistance of Vanguard Appraisals to complete that project. This brought some significant changes to the valuations in that area. Specifics, the land valuations was probably some of the most, uh, that was probably the largest portion of the value that we saw changes on. But, the net valuation from that was about $69,343,900, which is up 23.8% from last year. With that said, there's a significant amount of that that goes into new construction, so that's not all just saying reappraisal of existing homes. A large portion is for the new construction that existed in Horace. Along with the work in Horace, our office just didn't stop at that. We're outdoing numerous other cities. We finished a complete reappraisal of Tower City, the city of Alice, and the city of Leonard. Previously, these didn't have property records that, and we turned them around, digitized these property record cards, and made them available on our county website, which is available at the link here. Along with that, there was 12 other townships that we finished the reappraisal work for, and brought those property record cards up to date in the same format. The, the portion of townships that was, I reappraised this year was largely in the northwest, starting in Rochester, and kind of working the way over to south, and then southward towards, uh, 94 there. And we did get into Gill Township as well, which is just south of that area. So, we were able to complete all that, and we did begin work in Stanley. We were hoping to have that complete, but it, it just, our entry rate at the time wasn't up to our office. And we'd like to kind of get some more, more interior data updated more efficiently before we were prepared to go live with those values. So, we're hoping through letters this year that we can mail out to residents there and try to, try to update that information. Median sale price in Katz County went up from $223,900 last year to $233,000 this year. Seen about a 4% increase, and we saw the average days on the market go down to 64 days, which is very similar to what we've seen the last two years. It's, it's down one day from last year, and it's actually down two days from 2017. So, in permanent valuations, we're up in both, um, in both categories. Another project that took place this year, aside from just the reappraisal work that we did, was the revaluation of all the lake, ag land in Katz County. So, there's a little over 10,000 parcels of ag land in Katz County. And we found at the end of 2018, there was a new detailed soil map put together by the National Resources Conservation Service, or the NRCS. We found it very, very, uh, I guess the timing just seemed adequate to just get this in as soon as possible, make sure we're assessing ag land as fairly as possible, which the only way to do that accurately is through this information provided by the NRCS. So, what happened when we put in this map, they did some pretty drastic changes to some of the soil types and the productivity, or the PI, that exists on those soils. We saw about 60,000 acres on the western townships that were previously about a 74 PI, dropped down to a 62 PI. Now, what this means in valuation is a pretty significant drop if you were in one of, if you had a quarter of land that had that soil type in there. Now, on the eastern townships, we saw almost opposite happen, where there was about nine to 10,000 acres that were previously a 62 PI, that moved all the way up to 78. Those saw a pretty significant increase. But, every single parcel of land was recalibrated with the most accurate, up-to-date information that we have, and valuations were recalibrated based off that. The tax commissioner certifies our ag land value every year. This year, he, he certified a value of $1,290.18 and after the recalibration, revaluation of the ag land, we are right within tolerance at 93% of value, and that brought us at $1,204.31 per acre. Now, also in my book, we kind of get into the building permits and some additional information. You can see that initial permit is very stable, very steady. Commercial permit valuation went up significantly, although the numbers went down. That's largely due to the school permit that was taken out in the due force. These are the measurements that we use to determine our, our sales ratio analysis to make sure we're within appropriate tolerance levels. After all the work was completed this year, our residential ratio is at 95.8% and our commercial ratio is at 97.1%, which are both within the state mandated tolerance levels, 90 to 100%. And, um, yeah, and then there's just also some additional information in this booklet that can be reviewed for, uh, just in your own time. But, I just kind of wanted to highlight those key items as they relate to our county. Now, the main thing we're hoping to accomplish as a board today is to listen to all the appeals of valuations in Katz County. So, and what we'd like to do, this is just a hearing today. We're not looking to make any changes or adjustments at this meeting, but just kind of hear the individual concerns. And I would like to make, have a motion made on any property that appealed today to move that property to a pending status, so we can make our final determination of value at the follow-up meeting on June 15. And then also with that said, I would like to certify or approve all remaining, or all non-pending valuations. And before we get into the actual equalization portion, are there any questions of the board at this time?
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ficazzi? I see my fellow commissioners at home, due diligence, digging through their packets right now. So, any, any questions, commissioners? If not, Mr. Ficazzi, please continue.
Yep, and if it's all right with you, Chairman Peterson, I, we'll start with the equalization of the cities. Usually when we do this, we start with the city of Fargo, and we'll go through the appeals there. We'll work into the city of West Fargo, and then we'll work into the city of Horace, and then we'll open it up for any of the remaining cities. I'm prepared to, I know that are here, so if you would like, I can walk you through the list, and we can kind of go in that order.
Yes, exactly that, sir. And so, Mr. Hushka here, too. I'm not sure if our assessor from West Fargo is on. I'm going to look at my...
I did.
Yeah, he is, so... Uh, Mr. Ficazzi, go as you see fit, sir.
Okay. Well, I'll try to share my screen and see if that helps with some of the, for the sharing. But, to start with the city of Fargo, we did have one person contact our office, and it was regarding three different properties. Richard Nymark is appealing the valuation of his properties at 1105 Fourteenth and a Half Avenue South, 1115, uh, second, or Two and a Half, or Second Avenue South, apologies, and 1121 Second Avenue South. Uh, this was brought into our office, I believe, on Friday, so there really wasn't much review work that could have been done by me at this point, or the city of Fargo. But, I did speak with the city of Fargo today, and they are actually already out completing review, and they've met with Mr. Nymark to go through these concerns. That's the first step that needs to be done before we can come to any conclusion of value. And they are taking steps in the right direction to make sure that they are hearing Mr. Nymark's concerns and, you know, reviewing these properties in more detail. Are there any questions regarding the three properties that were presented by Mr. Nymark?
Let's let Mr. Hushka speak, if he wishes.
Sure.
That's okay if you don't, Mr. Hushka, just allowing you an opportunity to let us know what your thoughts are.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. We, we did look at two of the properties this morning and spoke with Mr. Nymark both Friday afternoon, after we heard of the appeal, and, again, today, when one of the appraisers was out at the two apartments. He's cooperating very well with us. We've got some good dialogue going. We're, the, the residents, both he and we are a little bit concerned about going into occupied homes. So, he, on Friday, said that he would take a number of photographs of the interior for us, and will drop us off a flash drive so that we can review that. We've done an external view of the property, so we're just waiting on a little more information from Mr. Nymark, and hope to, early next week, have all the work done on these and be ready for our recommendation when you reconvene.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hushka. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hushka or Mr. Ficazzi? If not, I think now would be the time for Mr. Nymark to speak, but I don't see him on.
And I did email him, and I don't think he would be able to attend the meeting, but he was just wanting to make sure he had all his information in on time, and so he can have that opportunity to go forward at the state level if needed.
Okay. I'm just doing a quick once-over on my attendees again, just in case. And I don't see him. Mr. Nymark, I presume you're not on? Okay, that, in case. Hey, Mr. Ficazzi?
I, I guess it's, it's going to be a lot of motions made today, trying to move these pending status. It's important that we make a motion on each, each fiscal appeal. So, I'd be asking the board today to move the three parcels referenced here, the independent status.
Commissioners, there's almost, is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Breitling seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, you know, I'm going to, we should do a roll call vote on these, Heather. Please.
Commissioner Sherling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Ficazzi, who's next?
Yep, and Chairman Peterson, that's all we currently have for Fargo.
Oh, yeah, you said just had one.
We want to reach out to the lobby in case somebody had a link that I'm missing, or is there anybody inside the courthouse there that showed up late?
Not in the chambers. Is anyone online in the city of Fargo wishing to appeal? We're going to check the hallway real quick, Mr. Ficazzi. Anyone from the city of Fargo wishing to appeal their assessment, their assessed value? Waiting for a report back from the physical lobby. No one here. Hey, Mr. Ficazzi, that would appear, last call in Fargo, appear to be the city of Fargo's resolve. West Fargo, sir?
I will move on to West Fargo, let me move down my packet there. Okay. With the city of West Fargo, we, we did have three people contact us, you know, actually a fourth person that I've added to the list. I'll go over with you after we get through the first three. But, we'll start with pivotal tax solutions, and I'm aware that Wayne Cannonbaum is here on behalf of West Fargo, so I will let this be the board.
Okay, I hear, or I see both Phil and Wayne Cannonbaum. Oh, no, Phil Burnbaum, sorry. Cannonbaum. Uh, Mr. Cannonbaum, do you wish to address the commission?
Yes, can you hear me?
Absolutely. Thank you for attending virtually, and I appreciate your, your tolerance in what we're going through. So, thank you for being here virtually. Your thoughts, sir?
No problem. Thank you. Thanks for having me. So, we're just concerned about this property we have here. Do you have our evidence packet there?
We do, sir. And all the commissioners have a physical hard copy with them at their, at their virtual offices.
Okay. You'll notice that, I don't know if we put it in there, but, and let me know if I'm incorrect about this, or the appraiser will, but I believe in year 17, the value was, the total value was about $2,152,000. Then in 18, it jumped quite, you know, a bit higher to $2,668,000. That's a huge jump percentage-wise, and then it jumped again this year to $2,912,200. That is quite a leap as far as valuation percentage is concerned. We were just mainly concerned about how the county's looking at it and how they're valuing it, because we have a hard time finding similar market sales right near the subject. We're wondering how the county decided to keep increasing this property. We're looking for a value possibly even of last year's value, which would be a huge increase from year 17. But, like I said, it's quite hard to find comparable properties. I noticed that we did send one that's nearby and very similar, but it might be in Minnesota, is what it looks like. So, I'm wondering what kind of comparables the county's using, because even though this happens to be in Minnesota, I believe, it's nearby, and it's a similar property, that's even newer retail property, nice property, that sold for $105 a square foot. And I think we use that also to compare it as far as an income analysis, based on the lease rate that they were getting for that, that Dollar Tree store. But, it was built in 2011, and very similar. We gave a map on our page eight to show that it's near the subject property. Again, we're all, all the way on now for $143 a square foot. So, our point again is that the increase in value has been tremendous. You've got a sale of a property, this particular retail site built in 2011, seems the same or nicer, and it's on for, sold for about $4, and it sold December of 19, which is very recent. So, we're just hoping that the board takes that into account, maybe takes into account the great increase in value over the years, you know, and talks about what the county has done to value this property so high, and looking for somewhat of a reduction if possible. I believe that's all we have. We were just more interested in what the county maybe had, or how they are increasing this property.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cannonbaum. Anything further, sir?
I believe that's all.
Outstanding. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for our owner? I would jump right to Mr. Ficazzi or the assessor in West Fargo. Whoever, Mr. Ficazzi, whoever you think is prudent to talk first?
Yeah, a couple of the concerns that were brought up that I can reference right away, and then I'll, I'll leave it to Nick, if he feels to chime in with anything additional. They did reach out to the city of West Fargo last year, and this property was reviewed prior to the city board. And what happened was, there was actually 4,019 square feet of building size that was missed during the review. So, that had to be added on to the structure, which resulted in the increase that we're seeing this year. So, that was just due to the deal that took place last year, and just a review of the property. As for comparisons that Mr. Cannonbaum was relating to, I think, the packet identifies it. I can kind of share a little bit here, too, on my screen. These are some of the retail stores that the city of, of West Fargo used to identify as comparables. Or PetSmart, as you can see, too, they do have the sale prices of the ones listed there. But, with that, if, if the city assessor has any, anything else to chime in on, I'd open it up to him.
West Fargo assessor? See, you're on the line.
Yeah. Thank you, commissioners.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. I, I think Paul pretty much covered that all. If you had any questions for me, I had submitted my stuff ahead of time for your review, so I can address any questions, I guess.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for our city or county assessor? Discussion or a motion?
The question, a question on one of the comparison sheets here, and I wish I had a page number. I have a PDF page number, so it's hard. It says value summary, and the years used are 2018, 2019, and 2020, if I'm on the right document here. Page two, I believe.
Commissioner Steen, is this what we're looking at?
Uh, is it? Okay, yep. Two of this one. And my question, because there's the issue about the square footage. So, when I'm looking at the 18, 19, and 20 calculations, did each calculation get adjusted for the square footage each year? You said that prior years, the square footage was missed, if I'm not mistaken. So, my question is, is the square footage correct on each of those calculations? Somebody...
Okay, Mr. Lee? Or Mr. Ficazzi? Who caught the, who caught the variance in square footage?
Yeah, uh, this is Nick, city of West Fargo. Uh, just to expound on that a little bit. Yes, for the 2019 year, they did appeal. We reviewed the property. After a few years of being out there, probably too many years of being out there, and remeasured it, and we found nearly 4,000 square feet. Not proud of that, but that happens sometimes. We put it on, we told them, you know, we're going to put it on for 2020, and that's what we did. As far as my sheet is concerned here, I, I don't know what number of pages you're referencing, if it's my workup or...
Page two, sir. So, is the heading of its value summary, the next page would be property summary?
I'm not sure that's my workup. Is that the...
Okay.
That went...
That might be the owner's.
Yeah, i- if it helps, the city of West Fargo's write-up is, at least in my packet, I, I might be looking at a different one, but it's on about page 95 to 20. And then it goes into the appellate information after that, beginning with pivotal tax solutions.
Maybe if you help her share the screen.
Yeah, I can, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll tell you on the right page. That's the page I'm on. All that's on.
Do that. Okay.
Next page. Go other way.
Okay, so this is the word invited by, uh, Mr. Cannonbaum.
Okay.
So, my question was, since there was a square footage error, has that error been corrected in each of the comparisons for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty? That's all I'm asking. Retroactively, is the square footage value correct? Are those numbers in error?
And I would have to have Mr. Cannonbaum weigh in on that.
Dean?
Mr. Cannonbaum, your thoughts?
My thoughts, I, all we're concerned with is that the value even in nineteen with the increase, et cetera, and the comps, I don't know the situation with the square feet. They're talking about 2020 that they added the square feet, suppose they didn't have, but I'm talking about overall with the comps, either way, even adding the square feet. I'm not sure if you can look at their comparables and see if it should be valued this high. That's what we're concerned about.
Commissioner Dean, are you...
I have no answer, but I'll move on with what I have.
Commissioners, any thoughts, discussion? Question for our assessors or our owner? Mr. Shirley?
Thank you. Yeah, and I guess I would perhaps look to our assessor, to our tax equalization director, to talk about the comps that you used, but, you know, even though it's very close to Minnesota, Minnesota's tax structure is completely different, and so I would, I would argue that it's completely irrelevant to have an out-of-state comp. And really, anything out of, outside of Fargo or West Fargo, in my mind, would be not comparable, but I would look to Mr. Ficazzi to talk about his comps and how he got to his number.
Mr. Ficazzi?
Thank you, Commissioner Shirley. And I would agree with that first and foremost, that, yeah, we do try to use local comps whenever possible, or those of the closest represented cities as possible. Again, these aren't comparisons that were put together by myself. This is information that was put together by the City of West Fargo Assessing Office during their appeal at the local level. But, yeah, it generally, one sale that happens isn't enough to warrant a change or an adjustment on any property. That's why we model our systems based off numerous sales, and we review detailed information amongst all those sales. So, comparing a PetSmart to one sale of Dollar Tree in Wilworth would be very hard to come across any opinion of value just based off of that. We would need a lot more comparable information put into that to weight it appropriately.
Further questions, commissioners? If not, I'd be looking for some guidance for our tax director.
Absolutely, and with that, I guess we're just looking again for a motion on this, just to move it to pending status.
I would say move.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Breitling, thank you. Moving second, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dean?
Yes.
Shirley? Yeah. Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, commissioners. Mr. Ficazzi?
All right. Apologies, because I'm scrambling through the screen here to get to the next one. Okay. Next on the list is Daniel Willard, who works for Ducharme McMillan Associates, which is the tax rep representing Menards in West Fargo. And I do believe I saw Mr. Willard on, in the lobby.
Willard, outstanding. It is your time to address us, sir.
All right, thank you very much. You all should have a copy of the packet that was provided earlier. Obviously, this is for the Menards store in West Fargo. The main building area is approximately 169,777 square feet, and then there are two ancillary warehouses on the property totaling 42,464 square feet. So, what we did for rendering our opinion of value, we went through and conducted a sales comparison and an AM analysis for the property. Based on the recent conversation of the previous appeal, there is an opinion that any property outside of Fargo, West Fargo, is not necessarily comparable. So, I didn't really give it the sales comparables much weight anyways in my final value conclusion, but what this is doing is just showing what these large, single tenant, big box retailers are selling for. You'll notice sale comp two is the former Gander Mountain there in Fargo. Obviously, it's a quarter of the size, so it's not, you know, entirely comparable in terms of size, but it is a local sale that did sell for $56 a square foot. So, in my final value reconciliation for the sales comparable, I gave most weight sale comps one and two, because they were, most gross adjustment basis, they were the least amount adjusted, and with most weight being given to the Gander Mountain sales, so I concluded the $52 a square foot for the main building. And then I did add in a lump sum value of $1,250,000 for the warehouse, because obviously, Menards is unique in that they have these warehouses to store their lumber, and most big box retailers don't. So, there aren't really sale comparables of these types of warehouses that are sold. They're just, you know, wood, wood truss with a steel frame or with steel siding. So, there's, it wouldn't really add that much value, but again, we needed to recognize that it was there, and they typically, so, I'm sorry, they typically build these for approximately $1.9 million brand new. So, with account of physical depreciation, we added the value of $1,250,000, and then that renders an overall value of $10,078,404 for the sales comparison. One sale that I did want to point out, again, it's not in Fargo or West Fargo, but just the situation, obviously, when these buildings are selling, most of the time, they're selling vacant, because the owner has left for one reason or another. And a lot of times, they are distressed sales, but that is not the case all the time. Sale comp seven occurred in Blaine. It's a former Walmart. Walmart, obviously, they did not go out of business. They built a larger store just to the south. So, it wasn't that the market wasn't working for them. In fact, it was working for them so well, they needed a bigger store. Well, they in turn had excess supplies, so they sold the property to another retailer, as you'll see, at $35.35 a square foot. So, it's not always the case that the property was a distressed sale. It's just that they have this excess property, and they didn't need it anymore, and it sold on the open market for that amount. Let me move into the income approach. We surveyed lease rates throughout North and South Dakota. As you'll see on my lease comparables page, there really wasn't much in, you know, by way of over 26,000 square feet of space being leased out, but I could find, again, this is just through, you know, LoopNet or CoStar Services. So, these are the ones that I was aware of. Again, they're really, really close to nothing local in the Fargo or West Fargo area. So, adjustments were made to size when you're built, and I concluded a $7 a square foot triple net rental rate for the property. And then you'll see, I concluded 10% for vacancy collection loss. I mentioned a realty rate survey that shows among, across the Midwest, there's a 6%, vacancy collection loss for retail properties. However, given the size of the building, I did increase up to 10% because this is a huge property that it would take a much longer time to fill, whether it is a single tenant or a multi-tenant convert. And then you'll notice I ran through and did the fixed expenses insurance. Those are being reimbursed, so essentially, net zero to the owner. And then, an overall expense ratio of 5%, which includes management fee, repairs and maintenance with the owner, would be liable for, and then administrative costs. And then I did do replacements for reserves, just 2 cents a square foot. That's also supported by the attached realty rate survey for a retail property. And then I used a base capitalization rate of 9%, which capitalized up to $10,065,890. Just like the sales comparison, I added in the value of the warehouse at $1,250,000, which concludes an overall value of $11,315,890. So, as I stated earlier, I gave most weight to my income approach. I felt like the data was more local, even though it wasn't in Fargo or West Fargo, they were both throughout the Dakotas. So, our value request for the Menards is $11,300,000.
Thank you, sir. Anything further?
Uh, no, sir.
Appreciate it. Mr. Ficazzi, your thoughts?
Sure, and thank you. Yeah, we were able to review the information, and West Fargo's write-up was submitted here as well. I guess there is one thing, I'm going to share my screen again, just to bring to everybody the tension, because the lease comparables that we were discussing, of the $7, I believe Mr. Willard said, was what we've used for the Menards. And I apologize if I wasn't able to have this in the packet earlier. I actually just got this information, because all the Menards, I think, plots are state were appealed recently. And you can see, as I said, yeah, it was difficult at the time getting some of the comparables, similar ones, square foot and size. But there was one submitted at the board in Williston, too, where it's the exact same sheet was split together, and they were able to find comparables for Cabela's, Hy-Vee, and similar. And that brought up supply for subject value for a square foot of $13.50, which really supports the valuation that's currently there. But that's really all I kind of wanted to point out to this. I think there is some better income information that was available, and this just came to light based off of an email I received from the assessor out from Williston. But as for today, I think it's just important that we move this to pending status, so we can review this in more detail and finalize our opinion at the follow-up meeting.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ken Pollock. I move to place this pending.
If there's any address to those other lease comps, if possible.
Oh, sir, we've got a motion on the table. One second. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the motion?
Commissioner Dean, I want to be, I want to be clear, Paul, on this. When we, when we move these to pending, is comments, you can do more thorough review and research. What exactly are we approving here when we make the motion compared, and what happens after the fact?
Sure, and I should bring to attention, I mean, you have the right to make whatever motion you want, if you want to approve the value, or if there's a change that needs to be made at this board, you have that.
We know, Mr. Ficazzi.
Yep. So, what this will do, moving it to pending status, is just give more time for me to review all the information supplied and give my write-up and recommendation on this specific property at the next board.
This will come back, the county, so once you've done a more thorough investigation.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. What we'll do is, at the end of this, once we've discussed all our appeals, we'll make a motion to appeal those that have, and then we'll table, or convene, is the right word, I think? Not convene. We'll go into recess with this.
We'll recess until June fifteenth.
Until June fifteenth, and we'll bring everything back. We've already convened it, Heather. Okay. City assessor from West Fargo, I guess you have a motion on the table. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollock?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Shirley?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our assessors will work with our owner. Thank you for your time, Mr. Cannonbaum. Right up to Mr. Cannonbaum. Mr. Willard?
Thank you.
Mr. Ficazzi, continue, please.
All right. Okay, so, moving to the next appeal, it's for Property Valuation Services, and it's an appeal by Property Valuation Service presented by Hunter Redman on behalf of Brookwood Motors. And I do believe I saw Hunter in on the lobby there.
Is our owner's representative, I don't see him, but there he is. Mr. Redman? Mr. Redman? I don't see that you're muted. And Mr. Ficazzi, you spoke with him, yes?
Yes, I did speak with Mr. Redman, and he is appealing on behalf of the Brooklyn Mobile Home Park, and said, he did send, or there was a write-up completed by the City of West Fargo Assessing Office, as well as himself, just looking at some of the sales. I'm just trying to pull up that information. I have it listed on page 116, just to show you here, it's the write-up completed by the West Fargo Assessing Office.
While we wait for Mr. Redman, Mr. Ficazzi, why don't you just go into your presentation, we'll ask the City of West Fargo to present, and then hopefully, by then, Mr. Redman will figure out his audio issues. So, please proceed, sir.
Sure, and this is, along with some of the other ones, is one that I'm, you know, just hoping to move to pending status, so I can get a little more additional time to review this in more detail. So, with that said, if I could pass it on to Mr. Lee, just to kind of discuss the specific concerns that he addressed at the local board, so that can be heard here today. I would like to go that route first.
Okay, Mr. Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, commissioners. This particular property sold in 2019, we only have one mobile home park, and it was, I would just say, higher than what we had on it before, which spurred us to look into it a little bit. And in doing so, looking across the state, there'd happen to be multiple mobile home parks that had sold, and you don't always get notified when things sell throughout the state. So, when we went and did our due diligence and looked through them, we noticed that not only were we low, but the value that they purchased it in, we feel is right in line with the other things that have sold. So, after doing our analysis, we placed it at its current value, and we feel that it is supported not only by the other sales in the state, but by their own sale last year.
Mr. Lee, thank you. Mr. Redman, any chance you've resolved any issues you may have? I don't, again, see that you're muted.
And Chairman Peterson, I did just receive an email from Mr. Redman, and he said it, Mike was not working today, but he also said that he does not need to present anything.
Okay, outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Redman. I appreciate your due diligence and quick response via email to our assessor. Commissioner, any questions for either one of our assessors? Discussion, a motion?
Commissioner Pollock with a question.
Sir?
This is one where it doesn't seem there would be any advantage to move it to pending status when, when the sale is actually, took place at an amount less than what the assessment for 2020 is. So, in this one, would it be more a matter of no change in value for the 2020 assessment?
I would be absolutely fine with that recommendation. I think that would make sense in this situation, since we have a current sale, and we're right within tolerance of that sale.
The only, the only question that I would have is that maybe, maybe if the owner were able, or Mr. Redman were able to present, he might, he might have an argument for it, that we don't have an opportunity to hear.
And if it helps answer that question, I did reach out and have a phone conversation, an email discussion, and he did not, both times, he did not wish to present anything additional.
Okay, thank you.
We've got a question. Commissioner Dean, thank you. Again, I'm dealing with the PDF pages. I'm on PDF page 104, where it's kind of listing all of the comps that were, that were listed by comparison, almost all in one sheet. And it talks about the dates they were sold, S it. And I'm just curious, I look at all the most recent sales, like nineteen and twenty, and, you know, so I'm looking down, comp one is $28,000 a lot, comp two is $23,000 a lot, comp four was $25,000 a lot, comp five was $32,000 a lot. That's the gross, the actual. So, those all seem to be, those are recent sales, and they seem to be much less than the $35,000. Again, I'm not an assessor, so I just have to ask stupid questions, I guess, but those are recent sales compared to the previous sales, which were much higher. Sales like in comp number six, I better go to the adjusted price per square foot, was 33, comp seven was 38, comp eight was slightly lower, comp nine was 43. What's going on with the...
What's going on with the prices of these lots that previously they were substantially higher per lot than they were last time, if you follow my drift?
Yeah, and, um, if we're, regarding the subject property, yeah, during the review because of the sale that took place was, uh, led to that exact. Again, I would like to review these sales in a little bit more detail before I do my final write-up, but right off the bat, there's a few of these just based off the typical year built and the overall size of, um, the mobile home park that I'd probably throw it all into comparison, uh, such as comp two, nineteen fifty-eight, um, and just, you know, some of, it needs to be, uh, I like to find stuff that the building area is in relation to it a little bit more and the land area. So you're comparing, uh, a mobile home park that has the same amount of lots. Um, for instance, uh, yeah, there's, there's a few of these that after reviewing in more detail, I, I think, um, I'll be able to put together a better sales comparison for you.
Thank you. Commissioners, your thoughts? Um, given the fact that the individual wanted to speak but was unable to, perhaps I would move to move this to pending. Is there a second, please? Moved in second, any? Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Sterling?
Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Fracazi, you said, you said you had one more for West Fargo?
That is correct, sir. Uh, the, the last one that appealed for the city of West Fargo was Tim's sold. Uh, he has an airport hangar at ten forty nineteenth Avenue Northwest. Um, and that appeal just came in, so there wasn't time to complete any review, um, but we will.
Mr. Fracazi, do we have anything given to us yet? Again, I'm looking through my packet and don't see it.
Yeah, it wasn't presented to you. Uh, I have information, but it, it came in, uh, the timing of it, it, it just came in after everything was sent over last minute. Um, if you want, I could pull up the packet that I do have and share it on my screen, though.
Well, I, again, my thought is that we've had zero time to even look at it. So I would suggest that we immediately move this to, I'm not, make a motion. Thank you. Commissioner Sterling or Brightling, you second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Uh, discussion? Any discussion? If not, uh, Mr. Fracazi, what's the physical address, so we all know?
Physical address to that property is ten forty nineteenth Avenue Northwest, number four.
Thank you. I just wanna have that. So commissioners, any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sterling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean? Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, commissioners. Mr. Fracazi, anything else in West Fargo or from our assessor in West Fargo?
That is all I have on my list for West Fargo.
Okay.
Nothing more for me either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I was just gonna ask if there's anything else. Uh, Mr. Fracazi, would you like to go to Horace next, or where would you like to go?
Yep, moving forward, uh, onto the city of Horace, uh, we do have seven appeals that have carried over, um, and of those appeals, um, I've had individual discussions resolved through the phone or email, and I believe we just have two people present today that, um, so if we could, gonna kinda be out of order of what's on the list, but, uh, if we could start with them and then we'll go through the remaining ones just to save their time.
Yeah, I see. Burnbaum, who else is here?
Um, I guess I saw, I know that Burnbaum is here, and I.
Yeah, the only name I'm seeing is, uh, it's like Mr. and Mrs. Burnbaum.
Okay.
Who else were you expecting, sir?
Uh, I believe Darla Frindle, uh, would be.
I do not see that person here, Mr. Fracazi. Is it possible, we're doing a check in the lobby right now to see if they may have shown up in person?
Okay.
If not, I would suggest, if I'm hearing you and understanding, Mr. Fracazi, I would suggest we start with the Burnbaums?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's just do that as we check the hallway. And, uh, Mr. Fracazi, there's no one here. Okay. Uh, Mr. Fracazi, please proceed. Of course, you know what? Let's let our owners come in first, and then we can jump to Mr. Fracazi. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Burnbaum, I see that you're on the line.
Yep, this is Jody. So I'm talking. My husband is here as well.
Awesome. Welcome to your courthouse virtually. Uh, we have your packet and information in front of us. Share with us your thoughts, please.
Thank you for having us. Um, so first of all, it seems a little odd to come up with a sixty thousand dollar, um, issue that we're having with our assessment after you hear the million dollar ones going before us, but, um, even still, what we wanted to come up with was a sixty-one thousand dollar increase for us in one year, which is a fourteen percent increase. It's quite a bit, and so since I do sell real estate also, I did do the comparables and send those over. So we're just wishing if someone could either let us know what comps were used to come up with our assessments, or if you could review the ones that we've sent over to review the assessment, we would greatly appreciate that. Cause like I said, fourteen percent for us is quite a bit in one year.
Understood. And, and we all have the right, whether it's ten dollars or a million dollars. I'm glad you're participating.
I appreciate that.
And your, your opinions matter, too. So anything further from you or your husband? Presume, husband?
Uh, nope, he is shaking his head at me. He's good with what I've said.
Okay, outstanding. Mr. Fracazi, your turn.
All right. Uh, thank you, Chairman Peterson. Uh, so yeah, uh, this was a situation where we, um, discussed the valuation of the Burnbaum family. Uh, their current value is four hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred, and that was, um, through the analysis done, contracted with, um, Vanguard to complete the reappraisal of Horace. Uh, I do wanna thank the Burnbaums for putting together that, um, the comparables that they did. Uh, it, I know it's a very large package that we have, but we did, um, pick together a market analysis, uh, just comparing their properties, uh, to what they felt were some similar properties. We did, uh, complete a market analysis of our own that, uh, the plan was after we finished this meeting to get this information off to the owners so we can have a really good one-on-one discussion about how we developed values and what we felt were comparables. Uh, one of the biggest issues we had with, uh, their property is, well, A, it's a two-story slab on grade, which, um, in the market, it's often hard to find comparables, usually slab on grade or generally on one stories. Uh, people tend to not wanna deal with, with stairs or whatnot when they build a two-story or a slab on grade. So that's why it's more unique to find a two-story one as opposed to a, a one-story. But, uh, we were able to find what we felt were some very, uh, good comparisons. Um, we had to go outside of Horace because of the uniqueness of the home and the size of the lot, uh, which it, it just made it really hard again to find, um, comparable comps in that city. But the detail in front of you in our sales comparison approach, uh, we feel at the moment that, yeah, we, we have, um, enough information to support that current value. Uh, the comps that were used by, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Burnbaum, unfortunately, those are outside of our area where we couldn't use. Uh, there was, uh, two from the, uh, I believe one was from Walcott, and, um, the other was from, it says Kindred, but it was actually in the Richland Township portion, which is south of, uh, Cat County. So those are the ones that we wouldn't even be able to use in our, uh, in our comparable sales. And then the one at, uh, fifty-five fifty-seven Hundred Sixty Ave, or Hundred Sixtieth Avenue itself. Uh, it was a one-story home. It, typically, I, I try to find as many, uh, similar homes as possible, and, and, you know, I understand through analysis, sometimes you have to go outside of that, uh, using the same style, but with the year built being quite a bit older, um, and it being a one-story, we just didn't feel it was, uh, appropriate use for a comparison in our analysis. Um, and we really feel the first comparable that we used in our analysis, which is in Reed Township, is a two-story slab on grade, built the exact same year. Um, we really feel that helps identify, um, what the value would be, but I, I, I asked today, though, that we, um, you know, move this to pending status so I can, uh, sit down and kinda give this information off to the Burnbaums and go over it individually with them.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollock, I move to put this to the pending status.
Is there a second? Second. Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollock?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Sterling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion passes. Mr. and Mrs. Burnbaum, our county assessor, tax director, will be in contact with you in coming days.
Thank you very much.
And we sincerely agree, appreciate your participation in the process.
Anytime.
Mr. Fracazi, I, I don't see the other name that we brought up in the, uh, looking in the lobby here, my, my virtual lobby, not physical lobby. I don't, I don't see them here, so. How would you like to proceed, sir?
Yeah, do you wanna see if there's anybody in the virtual lobby from, um, the city of Horace first before we just move on to the, you know, the appeals?
I don't see anyone, Paul.
Oh, in the, okay, sorry. Uh, well, with that said, then, um, yeah, the following, uh, we'll just try to make, uh, I, I would ask for the same motion we made. What we're gonna be doing with all these appeals on the list, we've reviewed their data up to this point, and all of these people, except, uh, the Burkharts shown here, were actually inspected by a member of Vanguard. So they were out at the house, uh, they reviewed the property, uh, you know, got the exterior measurements, interior data that we need to calibrate our system appropriately, and they were value-based off of, um, the reappraisal work. Uh, with that said, though, there's still some concerns that have carried over, and that's why we're seeing these here today. And I'll be working with them after this board to show detail exactly what I just showed you, um, with the Burnbaum property, and why we're at that value, and, and just try to, um, you know, might not be accepting of it, but I want them to have an understanding of how we got there, and that's what the steps will be taken on each individual property. So I would be happy to go over each one individually for a review or without these individuals here, um, when they're written submission. Uh, should we just, would it be best just to make an individual, uh, motion on each one? Do they just move to pending status for now?
I think we could take them as a group without objection from the commission. I mean, the, the theme is essentially, um, jump in. Commissioner Steen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm fine taking the first four. I just have a question on the, the Burkhardt one, so if we're gonna take the first four, then I'm, that'd be my preference. Okay, so I would move to, um, an independent Warlock Hill, Maruza, and Tilly properties.
I think that, uh, the new list has a fifth one on it.
Okay, and that's the fifth one, then I'm not sure I've got that.
That's Darla and, and Mark Frindleville. I think I pronounced it closely.
Mr. Fracazi?
That, that is correct. There, there are five now, um, as I'm showing on my screen here. So, uh, Sheen, Amber, Janelle, Bridget, and Darla.
All right, so moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Peterson?
Yes. Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Sterling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Commissioner Steen, you had a question about the Burkarts?
I did. I looked at the Burkhardt one and, and noted that, um, Paul indicated that you used some of the same comps when they, when they went through this process. And, and so I tried to look at those, and so there's three of them that, that I tracked down that you basically used the same comps, and that was, what, two twenty-nine Chestnut Drive to, see what, two twenty-nine Chestnut Drive, what was the other one?
The other one.
I make sure I get it right. And then two ninety, oh, two ninety-six, you did not. And the two before that was, uh, seven thousand nine Maple and ninety-eight oh eight Twenty-first Street. So what I noticed was the significant difference in all of these, cause they just, uh, they had another appraisal done, obviously, which is part of this, so it adds some credibility to their case. But I noticed the biggest difference was in, when looking at this, is there's an add-on that was called, called grade malt in, in all the comps?
Yep.
If you're tracking me, Paul, on those, like, seven thousand nine Maple Lane Horus.
Yep.
What is that?
Yeah, so the grade multiplier, when we go out and we value a property after we get all the components put together, that's the subjective portion of valuing property where we have to determine what is the grade or the quality of that property. So we have a model that we use here, and I apologize if I don't have it, to show that guides our appraisers, uh, based off of what they're seeing inside the house in the total livable area to, um, the appropriate grade for that. And we put that together, so everybody in my office is doing it uniformly. So if I have Jared out there or Nolan in my office, and they go to the same house, I want them to as close to the same grade as possible. Now, quality differs, obviously, um, in, in different homes, and that's what you're seeing through the grade multiplier. So after Vanguard completed this, they're saying that the home of seven thousand nine Maple Lane Horus is a slightly inferior home quality-wise in comparison to the home of seven thirteen Maple Lane.
Yeah, so then, and, and that's, that's what I thought it was. So then I looked at their, you know, when they have the uniform residential appraisal report for the refi. You know, they have the quality, they have a Q three, which I'm assuming that's where there's quality of construction, Q three, Q three, Q three. I mean, so they're making adjustments where there's a difference. They don't have the same, in, in the, interesting, you commented it's subjective. And they obviously don't identify the same subjective differences that perhaps Vanguard did or that we've done. And so I, I mean, I'm trying to figure out why would these be so consistently different, and it's all in the key that that quality piece, it looks like to me, cause I looked at the rest of the changes. So I'm assuming in pending, you're gonna do something with that and make sure that's, um, appropriate, the, the, the quality build differences. But that's the only thing I saw was huge difference here. If that makes any sense, but.
Yeah.
Figure that was the subjective piece.
With, with this specific property, we're hoping after the, um, moving it to pending that, and we reach out to the Burkarts, that will, uh, hopefully they can, you know, send us some pictures of the property, the interior, so we can just see if, um, for whatever reason, if, if, if there would be a quality change that needs to be made, uh, you know, we can, we can adjust it.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions? Done for a motion? Move to move the Burn, Burkhardt property to pending. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion on the motion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Sterling?
Motion passes. Mr. Fracazi, anything left for Horace?
There is nothing else left with Horace, so with that, I would ask if there's any person from any other city that, uh, we are missing that would like to voice their concern.
You're breaking up quite a bit, my friend. Repeat what you just said.
Uh, I, I would ask if there's anybody from, uh, any of the other existing cities in, in Cat County if they would, uh, like to voice their concern.
Audience members that are listening virtually, anyone online? Presumes still no one in the lobby, so they would have been here. Uh, anyone else participating virtually that would wish to address their particular property? Last call, anyone? I'm gonna go through my, make sure there's no one in the lobby here, too.
Okay.
Uh, virtual lobby. Wonderful technological terms. I see no one in the virtual lobby. Uh, there's no one in our physical lobby. I would say, sir, Mr. Fracazi, that's it.
And then with that, um, it is our duty to, uh, finalize the, uh, cities prior to the township. So I would ask that we approve the remaining city values without non, without a pending status.
Understood. Commissioners, discussion? Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sterling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Ficazi.
Okay, and that will bring us to the township level. And we do have two appeals that came in today regarding the township. Don't think they are in your path.
Well, they're not, they're not posted.
Right, okay. So, the first one, I will, here, try and get the name correct.
Mr. Ficazi, before we get too far into this, due to the fact we don't have any information up until right now, commissioners, are your, would you like to go through this, or should we wait to allow ourselves to have a chance to review this?
Commissioner Pollak speaking. I think that we should move it to pending.
Is that, Mr. Ficazi, is that okay?
No, that is fine.
I just don't think it's We had no time to look at anything.
I just wanted to bring up the names in the parcels, so we were approving the appropriate people, moving them to pending.
Okay, fair enough. Let's do that, please.
Yep, so the first one is for Brenda Staples. This is for A-Glan valuation, and the parcel is sixty dash zero 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 dash zero one one three zero dash zero zero zero. And it's, the other property she was appealing was parcel sixty dash zero 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 dash zero one one five five dash zero zero zero. And I would ask to move those two properties to pending status in retaliation.
Is this the same owner?
Same owner, yep.
Okay, thank you. So moved. There's a second, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Christine?
Yes.
Sterling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, and the last appeal that we had at the township level, at least presented it to us prior to the meeting, was regarding Watson Township. And this was actually written from, or submitted from Jackson Barstedt, who's their township secretary. So, as I discussed at the beginning of the meeting, there were some significant changes to A-Glan valuation in our county. And Watson Township saw a drastic amount of those changes. So, this isn't necessarily an individual appeal, but what they would like is to have a discussion with me. I'm planning, I'm going to print off a map of the whole township, get the land use and the A-Glan data sheets that we provide. And myself and Mr. Kapanen, sitting in the audience today, are going to visit with their township and go over that, all those items to correct if there needs to be any additional modifiers put in place. Generally, this is something that's done at the township boards, but obviously, due to the concerns or with what happened at some of the township boards with, due to the pandemic, this is the specific one where they reached out and they really felt, you know, we want to get this looked at, and I think we owe it to them just to review this in more detail. So I will be meeting with them by the end of this week or early next week. And we're going to go parcel by parcel on any one they have. And I will, will come across, if there's any changes to valuation, I'll bring us to attention at the follow-up meeting.
Ficazi, thank you. Sir, you're here. Would you like to talk to the
No, that's, that's fine. That Paul and I had talked earlier.
Okay.
And we've been in contact with township.
Wonderful. Just for those of you online, a gentleman representing Watson is here. He's saying he'll work with Mr. Ficazi into the near future and work through whatever issues they may have. Outstanding. Thank you for showing up, sir. I know your time is valuable, too. Mr. Ficazi, any further discussion from the commission that you'd like, or any questions from, any questions for Mr. Ficazi from the commission? If not, we should do a motion to move it to pending prior to making anything, any other action on the other townships, correct, Mr. Ficazi?
Yeah, for this specific one, to clarify the motion, I would make a motion to move A-Glan values in Watson Township to pending.
Outstanding. Commissioners, discussion? All moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean? Sterling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Ficazi, what else do we have going on in our townships? Any other appeals?
That is all we currently have, sir. Our final order of business is just to approve township valuations. So similar to the city ones, I would just ask that we approve all township values without a pending status.
Commissioners, all moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Sterling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Ficazi, anything else in our fair county that needs to be discussed?
That is all I have today, sir. Thank you for your guys' time.
So I would look for a motion and a second and a vote to go into recess until June 15th. All moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, I'm going to do a roll call on this, please, too. Yes, please.
Commissioner Sterling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are in recess until June 15th. Mr. Ficazi and your team, thank you for your work. Those of you that are still online, that are citizens, thank you for your time and your local investment in what is your property. So, we'll be working with you shortly, and thank you again, Mr. Ficazi. Thanks. Thanks to the team at Vanguard, too. And make sure they know how valuable we believe their services are. And if they have any more time, they can always talk to us, which I know they don't, but I talk, every time I talk to them, I'm like
I'll be happy to hear that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollak speaking?
Yes, sir.
It would be helpful if, the next time we see this stuff, if we would know where the particular submittals are from. In other words, we were looking at stuff, I didn't know if it was from the taxpayer, if it was from the city of West Fargo. It would be helpful if we could just have a little more clarity on who's provided the documents that we're looking at.
I will make a point of making that more clear in the next one. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And perhaps page numbers. Yeah, some have hard copies, some have PDS, it's just hard to follow, especially when we don't go in order. So
It's a unique circumstance, Mr. Ficazi, where we've got hard copies and virtual, so it's a bit of a learning curve. So if you would
Yeah, I really appreciate everybody working with the changes and differences.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Pat, in two of our agenda, Cass County Youth Commission program, Mr. Prochniak is here. Long time no see, as I said when you walked in. Thank you for showing up, and I'm going to yield the floor to you, sir. What are your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for allowing me some time to share some thoughts on behalf of the Cass County Youth Commission Advisory Board. I currently chair that board since the retirement of our past treasurer. But frankly, in light of the events that have been occurring over the past few months, and in particular, over the last 72 hours, what I'm about to share with you today seems rather light. Nonetheless, it is serious in the eyes of the youth that we've had interaction with. And quite frankly, the next steps that the, that the advisory board feels, at least for the immediate future, are prudent. I had the opportunity to sit with Heather, and hopefully she shared the document with you, kind of touching on some of the things that I'm going to provide a little bit more information on. I'm going to kind of go through this. My intent is to cover the information that I have with that additional information. And then certainly, I can answer any questions and feel free to pick my brain. You know, I believe we are at a crossroads for the Cass County Youth Commission. My opportunity as serving as part of the committee for the past four years, as chair for the past year, I've identified, along with the advisory board, several different observations. And quite frankly, I've categorized those observations into, you know, some of the workload that the committee is involved with, and quite frankly, how that workload transitions to a couple of people. I've identified fundraising versus learning for the actual youth commission itself, the attendance, and sometimes lack thereof, school participation, the interest in county government positions, especially with the targeted audience that we are going after or that have been involved. And then how some of those observations were addressed. Along with the observations, there are some concerns that were identified. Some of those concerns included safety of students commuting to the meetings. What do I mean by that? For example, we have representation from all over the county. They have to drive in. They drive in with their own transportation. We have some concern with, we are taking the attendance. We are accounting for that body being here. And it puts us kind of in a precarious situation. Sometimes we hear when there's a last-minute change, sometimes we don't, and then we're scrambling to try to find where the student is at. Scheduling conflicts, that's always a challenge. I'll elaborate on some of these. From my past history, I always look at cost benefit. I'm looking at the number of people involved with the committee itself, the time that is put in, the time and effort, the day that the students meet. Can we do better? It's a question out there that I don't necessarily have the answer to, but I'm going to share some thoughts. Lastly, you know, whether the commission generally was aware of this or not, some of the way that we would raise funds, and this certainly has been addressed during this current year, was soliciting for donations. More specifically, donations through banking institutions. We put an immediate stop to that, felt very uncomfortable, albeit it was out of the graciousness of their businesses. We just didn't feel that that was our part when it comes to Cass County Youth Commission going to those institutions and asking for a donation, which in turn, at the end, was certainly given to the charity of the students' selection. The observations that I touched on a little bit, let me elaborate, please. The fundraising versus the learning, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Going out, trying to solicit funds, whether it be from a banking institution, whether it be from other businesses, and saying, we belong to the Cass County Youth Commission, can you support us? I certainly understand that there is a part of that in life that we all experience. But I would question the value of what we were trying to get across as a group, as a unit of government, and what the learning takeaway was that. Is that really the crux of it? And I struggled with it. I struggled with, quite frankly, the body of students that we solicited. They are all-stars. They're fantastic. They're involved in student government, student council. They're taking AP classes. They are all-stars on an athletic team or extracurricular activities. These students want to run the company. They want a PhD. They will run a company. They will run government. Is that the most impactful group that we should be targeting? Again, I don't necessarily know, but what it does present are some challenges. Their time is precious, and we're asking them to give up a monthly meeting every single month during the school year. That affects attendance. Attendance, I could say, over this past year, there were two different sessions in which we'd had 100% attendance. They're busy, they're doing things, they're involved in those other activities I talked about. They're taking AP exams, they have to do that. I get that the school functions are the priority. Makes the question, are we doing this in the right format? Should it be in the school system? Should we support that with going to the school system? Student evaluation of presenters. Have you ever had that class where you are asked to give the little bit of evaluation afterwards? We've had a chance to review those. We always get them at the end of the presentations. It's hard-pressed to find one that's bad, because you're going through motions. You're just filling it out. Very little honest gut reaction feedback. When I talk about our all-stars, I'm going to pick on myself. I don't think any of these students are clamoring to be the next emergency manager. When it comes to department head presentations, there are maybe few and far between that they aspire to be. That's not to be critical. That's to say, are we using our time and their time to the best of our ability? Some of the concerns I talked about a little bit, the commuting to the meetings, the responsibility of the county when it comes to attendance, scheduling. Holy smokes, when you talk about scheduling, and quite frankly, over the past couple of years, a lot of this has fallen into the hands of emergency management and Amanda's position. 90-plus percent of it. And you try to schedule a year in advance, and you get department heads or the presenters for the leadership component, particular day that they are coming for the Cass County Youth Commission, and people have last-minute changes. Everybody's lives are extremely busy, and it gets to be a juggling act at times. You try to do your best. The two meetings a month that the committee is involved with, a week before the students come, we have a committee meeting. And then the day the students are here, we're trying to, the committee and advisory board is here. So that's taking two different days out of their monthly schedule that they have to participate. That's where I kind of get into that cost-benefit ratio. I don't have an exact number, but I do think that we are using a lot of human resource when it comes to Cass County personnel, where maybe there are some other models where we could get just as much bang for the buck. And I'll touch on a couple of examples at the end of this. I struggle with the whole fundraising component, the whole idea of just going out. And year after year, these student groups tread it up the previous year on how much they raised for a charity that they picked up. Don't get me wrong, by any stretch of the imagination, these charities are very worthwhile, and they are local. And they benefit from that effort. However, I would rather, in my humble opinion, see them learning about not only the government, the local government, but also the various positions within government, and have an educational piece, a leadership component. Somehow, I think the whole fundraising aspect of this dwarfed everything else, stood out to me. What steps were taken in the past year, as I'm starting to draw towards the end of this? We no longer, as I had mentioned, solicit financial institutions. We limit fundraiser functions. We try to, to our best effort with the advisory board, share the duties. People get pulled different directions. And when it's left to a couple of people because folks can't show up, other departments are busy, the youth commission is still expected to function, and they get left holding the bag. We no longer pay mileage for students. Most of the students in the drive behind that decision, when they would come in, they wouldn't submit it anyway. They never asked for it. We limited after-hour events, with the exception of parking, and that parking event that you're very well aware of at the LEC for the Bison football games. We were having committee members show up on Saturdays, on weeknights, to different fundraising events previously. And they were the only ones representing the youth commission. It wasn't the youth that was wrong-headed, and the employee's time is precious as well. So where are we at? I talked about the crossroads initially. Sharing this more is informational. I don't know that it's And, you know, sharing this more as an informational, I don't know that it's necessary, an actionable item. I struggle with this, and I've shared this with some in conversation, that I felt like I was the one that was stabbing this highly coveted program and degrading it to a point of, what are you trying to accomplish, Mr. Prochniak? That's not the point at all, and that's not why I'm here today. What I envision are some steps that we could do in the future that would maybe be just as impactful, less of a lift for county government employees, and still provide that educational component that I think we had lost track of. We hear so many different reasons why things are postponed because of the pandemic that we are faced with. We're in no different situation. We don't know what school systems are going to do next year. Right now, we should have a body of students and their applications for next year. We can't really solicit them because we don't know if they're going to have school. Some schools have reached out, are you going to have it? Well, how do we answer that when we don't know if you're even going to have school in the first place? We're suggesting, and have agreed to as an advisory board, that we take this next year off. A hiatus, if you will, from the Cas County Youth Commission, as it's titled, or at least currently titled. And over the next 18 months, we retool this program. We get some other input, not only the advisory board because of their past experience, but maybe some other members of Cas County Government, maybe some of the school systems, and we explore maybe a better option to go about this. There are several different examples that could come to mind, just to share some of those examples, by no stretch, a decision has been made. There's talk, we could have an emphasis date where they come in, and it's almost like a mini-conference, and we do fast-hitting presentations from department heads, we do leadership pieces where they pick and choose some of those as breakout sessions. That's just one example. The other example I alluded to, and this isn't, you know, I can't take credit for it, this is somebody else's, is the idea of going to the schools. They get ahold of us, we let them know we are available, and we share with their government class or their student council what this is about, what our roles are about as leaders in Cas County Government. There are different models to draw from in various parts of the country, and how they tie them in to county government, county government month, and I think we could build on those. The advisory group is willing, and they would like to move forward with some of these changes. I stand for you to tell you once again, I'm not here to kill this program, I'm here to take it to a better place. And if we can do that, and I share that information with you, I think it'll serve not only our citizens, the dollars they have invested, our employees, and quite frankly, the most important group, the students or participants, if you want to call that, it'll serve them the best. So I know that for some of the people that I haven't had a one-on-one conversation, this is all new news, and that Mr. Chair be open for any questions or comments.
Mr. Prochniak, thank you. You and I spoke about this, Mr. Wilson and I spoke about this. I think the last thing you said is, to me, the most important, you're not here to kill this program. I think it's incredibly valuable. I think that it can be improved, markedly improved, and I think the only concern I have with that is, who's going to be in charge of that? That's what I would ask you, is who do you think is going to be the next Charlotte to take this to the next, I hate this term, and I'm going to use it anyway, take it to the next level where it makes more sense, given the changes that have probably taken place within our educational system in the last 10, 20 years since this started? Who's going to be man in control to see this thing and make it better?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I don't know that I have an answer at this moment. That conversation has occurred from a standpoint of, in a general sense, with our advisory board and after some follow-up conversations. And what I would offer is, I think that the board is more than willing to gather some input, maybe see where that best lands, how we can make the most of that, considering what direction we start to go off to and how we shape that program. And once we start to flesh out some of those answers and gather that input, then I think we try to make a recommendation of where this best lands. To commit to it now, I think, maybe a little soon, I don't want to speak for the advisory board at this point.
Commissioners, questions? Questions or discussion?
You know, it's, COVID whole issue, I know is delaying a lot of things, and I understand the schools or don't know what's going on and that type of thing, but an 18-month hiatus seems to be extreme, but, you know, but again, I'm not involved with retooling, I'm not involved with remaking the program, I don't know what that involves. And, you know, it'd be nice if we're going to shorten program, we could try to shoot for something, maybe spring semester or whatever it might be, but it just seems unfortunate for that class, the leadership of the class coming up, that they'd miss out on the opportunity. But again, I'm not involved with creating a new program, so I don't know what time that takes. It'd be nice if we could do something for this year, and I get most of everything you said about the travel commitment, the time commitment. These kids are unbelievably busy during school. I mean, it's great they can make an opportunity or make time to come and take advantage of this opportunity. My thoughts on that, and the other pieces, I think if you reduce it to a day, like a career day, or reduce it to just doing it in school, they're going to miss so much of what previous classes had with regard to coming to the county courthouse, finding out what's going on here. I mean, I was never in the county courthouse except to pay my bills, own the front office. I didn't have a clue what was going on in the county courthouse. So to take that away from the class would seem inappropriate to me, but again, I'm not involved in the day-to-day management, programming, I don't know, that's just my thoughts that are offered up.
Chairman Peterson and Commissioner Steen, I appreciate those comments as well. And they actually have surfaced with our advisory board. And, you know, it goes from the exact examples that you just shared, maybe a smaller version of it, all the way to, you know what, we got to get away from the title completely, not consider it a county youth commission, and this is just about going to the institutions and teaching the children, having a conversation with them. I will say that when it comes to visiting certain components of county government, by far, the jail was the number one visit. Why, for the life of me, they enjoyed that lunch, I'm not sure, but, you know, it was an experience that hopefully they never have to set foot in that facility, and I highly doubt that they would.
Commissioners, further comments? Commissioner Shurling?
Thank you. So I support taking a break and reassessing this program, and the only request I would have is that you establish what your goal is, what are you trying to accomplish, and then go forth accordingly. I'm not quite sure what the goal is right now, and, you know, keeping in mind, these are taxpayer resources that we're utilizing. The extension has got school programs, or at least they have had in the past, you know, is this the role that county government should be doing with our taxpayer dollars? And I do think, but I think it's high time to really create a purpose, and really establish what is it that we're trying to accomplish.
Chairman Peterson, Commissioner Shurling, thank you as well for those comments, and I guess I would submit to the council, you know, everything is on the table, maybe that's what I'm trying to spit out. I think we have to take a most critical look at this from all aspects, and try to pull out the value and see where we're at, and I totally agree, we have to have an anvil here, and identify that, and then certainly move towards that.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further thoughts? Any further thoughts? If not, Mr. Prochniak, what do you need us to do? Clearly budgets are coming up, and that's probably when I'd address this next.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that has also been thought of. I would, you know, because there's not a formal motion being asked for here, I would likely come to the commission as far as budget time with zero in the ledger for that account, maybe hold the account open in case the program gets revitalized in a different shape. And I guess Mr. Mount Pleasure is listing as well. And for this year, we are in a holding pattern from an expenditure standpoint, and that's where we go.
Outstanding. Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Prochniak? No, sir, thanks for your time, and obviously, I felt some pain in your voice here when you and I spoke, and Mr. Wilson and I spoke, and I think there's some pride in this. I don't think we're here to quash this, I think there's a time to evolve, and I think this is that time, so I appreciate you taking on, it was probably a pretty dang difficult conversation.
This is a coveted program, and there were some blood, sweat, and tears by some previous spokes, and I certainly appreciated that, but as an outsider, sometimes you can take a look at it with a fresh breath.
Yep, and that's okay, there's nothing wrong with that. So, again, commissioners, any questions? If not, we've moved to item three.
Thank you.
Mr. Prochniak, thank you, item three on your agenda, Corona update. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, got a few updates for you this afternoon. I'll try to be somewhat brief, but obviously, this is a situation that continues to evolve and have some new wrinkles for us all the time. So it's, you know, the response to COVID-19 is changing week to week, and I think nothing more apparent, at least on the state level, with our state partners at the state of North Dakota with the North Dakota Smart Restart advancing to the next green low-risk category that it did last week. That's not to say that we're exactly tied to that, but we obviously work closely with our state partners. You know, one of the first things that visitors and employees to the courthouse will notice in the most immediate timeframe is the court is going to be getting back to a more normal process in the next couple of weeks. They're starting with a couple of their hearings this week, a couple of types of hearings, they're going to ramp that up and be back to almost a full schedule or a new normal by the middle of the month. So that, you know, just as an example, by Wednesday of this week, I was told to expect that we may have 40 people in the building throughout the day coming through for hearings. So that's, you know, going to be, obviously impact us, as they are a user of a significant amount of our facilities here in the courthouse. One of the most immediate things that I'm going to look to commission for feedback on and have probably the bulk of our conversation today will be in regards to the CARES funding that is available to counties and municipalities through the federal legislation passed last month to reimburse for COVID-related expenses. So I, working with Chair Peterson, I've got a number of potential costs and projects I want to discuss with you today that we would like to submit application for. And this is, as many things have transpired this way, things move fairly quickly. Myself and Mr. Mount Pleasure were on a call with State Office of Management and Budget and the League of Cities and the North Dakota Association of Counties a couple of weeks ago about what are reimbursable COVID-related expenses, how do we go about submitting that, and what are the timeframes? That was two weeks ago. At that point, we were told the timeframe, the deadline to get requests for eligible expenses in is this coming Wednesday, June 3rd. So that we, that, and those requests will then be reviewed by the State Emergency Commission that meets on the 18th, but there was some time there to prepare agendas and bring that forward. So it's a, understand this is a quick turnaround time that we're looking for feedback on, but I wanted to run through a couple of potential submissions for your consideration. Before I get into those specifics, I guess I would stop and ask for any general questions or comments that the board might have.
Commissioners, any questions on a broad perspective? If not, Mr. Wilson, proceed.
Thank you. We have a total of five items that I'm going to run through for your review here, and then stop me at any point, otherwise I'm just going to keep chipping forward. Number of our discussions with the presiding judge and court administrator, as they consider reopening court and the court process, is how do they appropriately socially distance court participants? That is jurors, potential jurors, attorneys, court staff, and in a lot of cases, we have reviewed this with Fargo-Cas Public Health, with architects who designed the new addition to the courthouse, and identified the number of potential jurors you can have in courtrooms and jury rooms, and what we might need to do to better accommodate social distancing. And so we are, through those discussions and working with our building and ground staff, we're going to be requesting $25,000 for accommodations that would need to be made to courtroom, jury box, as well as some, you know, microphones, audio equipment, so rather than passing microphones around and handing it person to person, as has been the previous process for working through a pool of jurors, potential jurors, there would be individual microphones, maybe some more furniture, so as jury box chairs are anchored, this would add a little more ability to move around within a courtroom, some hand sanitizer stands, and other similar changes, accommodations that could be made and still preserve the look of our very nice courtrooms, but also allow for distancing more than we have right now. That would be one request. A second request?
Let me, Mr. Wilson, let me jump in on that real quick. The concern I have there is the budget seems to be quite low, and I know that I've expressed to you that I don't want our staff internally doing any of the work because we have enough tasks for them to do at hand, so bringing in general contractors to do this work will get exceedingly expensive very fast, because the timeliness of this, just as a reminder, commissioners, this needs to be, we're starting a court here in a couple of weeks, so this needs to be, you know, on point immediately. I'm happy if the number is accurate and you verified and validated that, so basically saying, are you comfortable with 25,000, that's going to accomplish the mission at hand? It seems low to me, but are you happy? And then presuming that Gene and Mr. Mount Pleasure, our team, have reviewed this, so the 25,000 everyone's comfortable with?
I've reviewed this with Mr. Gartner. I understand on surface, it appears low, but trying to be certainly responsible with dollars, but in what we've talked about, the things that we need to do for a, in an immediate setup to appropriately socially distance, that's where we are at right now. I understand the concern.
Okay, thank you.
Understand that.
Continue, sir.
Um, another, uh, project that, that was within the, um, 2020 budget to, uh, design plans for, uh, is an expansion of to, of the, uh, and a remodel of the jail intake area. And obviously, uh, the jail has been a central focus of, uh, COVID-19, uh, impacts and, and reactions, uh, as since this outbreak began. Uh, the, the, the critical nature of it being the, uh, uh, the jail is the backbone of our, our criminal justice system here in Cass County, uh, and, and the, uh, the importance of, uh, preserving that and the, and, and, uh, limiting the exposure to bringing the, uh, the virus inside that facility. One of the, the challenges with that intake area is how small it is. And under normal circum- circumstances, it is a small area and it would, uh, would be well-suited for expansion. When you're talking about preventing virus transmission and close contact and, uh, uh, easy, um, transferability from one person to another, if you have somebody who is, is positive or, or suspected to be positive. That intake area is an area where you have not only inmates, but jail staff and staff of every local law enforcement agency passing through on a daily basis. And, and this would be a way to, um, uh, to provide more social distancing and do that in a, a manner that does not, uh, as easily, uh, make it, make itself as easy and conducive to virus spread. Now, there are, uh, there are some challenges with, uh, um, some of the uses of this, uh, uh, COVID, these CARES funds. They have to be expended by the end of the year. We have had a number of discussions of can this project be completed by the end of the year. Uh, but there are, uh, uh, some emergency, uh, clauses that we would need to, uh, need to invoke in, in terms of, of bidding and procuring services. We have, uh, worked with the, uh, State's Attorney's Office to review if we have, uh, have the ability to do that. We do. We've worked with a architect who is a, a specializes in construct, uh, corrections, construction to verify, can we physically do this? We've been, uh, we've been assured that we can do this if the, uh, if this request were granted. So that is a second, um, request for 6.225 million dollars, uh, to, to make that request to, um, to remodel and expand the jail intake area. Based on pure, purely on the dollar amount, I would, I would pause to that, see if there are any questions for that, uh, that point.
Commissioners, any questions?
Commissioner Pollak speaking.
Yes, sir.
When I look at the dollars on that, I can't understand what kind of work you're doing for $6 million that you expect to get done by the end of the year.
Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board, this is a remodel of the jail intake area of the Sallyport where, uh, where, uh, law enforcement vehicles come in. Uh, I, um, understand, uh, the, the question, uh, about the ability to complete that in the end of the year. That is a conversation that, uh, Chair Peterson and I had when we first started looking at this issue. Uh, one of the, the reasons that we believe we are able to do this is because we did, uh, complete a space need study, uh, of this area, uh, in 2018 or 2019, identified the general need, uh, moving forward. And so we, uh, in, in many ways are not starting from ground zero. We have, uh, we have a concept of where we would go. We reached out to the architectural firm that has a familiarity with what we are, what we are trying to, trying to accomplish. And, and so I think without that starting point, we would not be in a position where, where this would be, uh, would be feasible. But because of that, uh, that prior work, we are in a position to potentially, uh, to, to get this done if the, uh, if the funds are approved.
Okay. Well, hard to imagine.
Understood. Uh, the, the next point, uh, is the, and Sheriff Johnner and, and Captain Frobig have mentioned several times the, uh, the need, uh, for the, uh, and, and reliance they have on the negative airflow cells they have within the jail. Uh, and in, in normal times, you, you have about four that we have, that we currently have in the facility. And that's where you're, you're able to, to house inmates who, who may be sick or may, or have, uh, a, a health condition that may be contagious. Uh, during times of, uh, of COVID-19, that, that number is woefully inadequate. And, and we have worked with the mechanical engineers who, uh, are, uh, uh, most familiar with the, the mechanical and the building infrastructure within the jail, uh, about what, how many cells could be, uh, expanded to be negative airflow, um, capable. And, and we've identified that, um, uh, an additional cell, cells could be remodeled, uh, and include negative airflow capability. And the, the cost to do that would be approximately $60,000. And, and uh, all of, both of these last two points have been reviewed by, uh, uh, Captain Frobig, Sheriff Johnner, and, and they are, uh, in, at their direction that these would be the most appropriate of, uh, a number of different cell options to do that. So that is, uh, that is our third point. Um, fourth point.
But if I may, Mr. Wilson, on that one, same concern I had the first time regarding costs, modifications within existing HVAC system can be expensive. Are you, again, just verifying as all, are, are you confident that you have enough resources that we're asking for to accomplish the mission at hand?
Mr. Chair, I would tell you, I am in no position to challenge the feedback that we have received from the mechanical engineer that took a look at the, uh, the, the request and, and provided the estimate. So it is, that is, I, I offer no, uh, uh, personal expertise that, that, that number, but that is what we're being, being told is, uh, is the appropriate amount.
And that too is far out of the realm of my expertise, but it just, the numbers we talked about seem, everything, everything that seems low to me is all, uh, which sort of is what it is, but I believe in you.
Not everything seems low.
And, and I, uh, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that because we are, as, as we, as we look at these potentials, we are also, uh, looking to be absolutely responsible with, with taxpayer funds as well.
Continue, sir.
Uh, yep. The fourth point is the, um, ITV, um, closed circuit television link between our courtrooms and our jail facility. And, and this is the, um, equipment that gives us the ability for, uh, inmates who, when they're making their first appearance, do not have to physically travel from the jail to the courthouse to make their, those appearances, to make those, uh, appearances by, by closed circuit television. Uh, currently the equipment that provides that link on the jail end is county responsibility. The equipment that provides that, uh, in, in the courtroom link on the courtroom side is state responsibility. So if we were awarded funds for this, uh, for, uh, for this element, we would have some coordination that we would need to work through with the state because I, I've had this conversation with our IT director. We, um, uh, uh, Mr. Schmuggs has some significant, um, concerns about, uh, taking over the courts, um, uh, what is currently a court responsibility, uh, in, in maintaining this system. But regardless, we, we know that the current system on the courts, uh, courtroom side is at end of life. That is not a question. And if we were to lose this, uh, this ability for those ITV hearings, um, number one, uh, that would just be, uh, for, um, it, it would be a challenge again under normal circumstances. But when you factor in the fact that, um, that they do have inmates from time to time who come in and, and may be suspected of being COVID-positive or may be confirmed to be COVID-positive, they still need to make court appearances. And, uh, if you, uh, had to transport, uh, that individual, that, that is, um, putting, uh, court, uh, jail, jail transport staff, uh, uh, needlessly at risk and, and exposing the, the county to more, more costs and more, uh, uncertainty than if we are able to, uh, uh, allow them to make those, uh, appearances by, um, uh, by closed circuit TV. One last pause before I jump into the last item. Okay. Uh, the, the last item is a, uh, a court, uh, courtroom remodel that, uh, that came to me late, uh, last week. And, and this would be to, uh, consider, right now we have, we have two different, we have two courtrooms that are side by side, 303 and 304. They are rather small courtrooms. And, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Burdick, uh, the, uh, court administrator would tell you that the, the usefulness of these courtrooms are fairly specific. They, uh, and the, the proposal would be to combine 303 and 304 into a single courtroom. Obviously that, uh, would allow for more social distancing than two small courtrooms would be, uh, would, would allow for. And, and so there's some, some flexibility and, and some utility that, that might be gained with that larger courtroom. I will tell you that I have, I have already heard from the court administrator that there would be a question or a challenge of, uh, losing courtrooms and trading two courtrooms for a single courtroom, uh, would be a challenge for a, a court system that, uh, deals with a large volume of cases. But again, there, there's a potential benefit there, uh, of having larger courtrooms where you can accommodate more social distancing with, uh, with court participants. The, that, um, that project, we do not yet have a cost estimate on that. We've reached out to a local architect who has familiarity with, with the courtrooms and they are in the process of putting together, uh, an estimate for that project. We expect to have, uh, that estimate prior to the submission deadline of Wednesday afternoon at 5:00, but we do not have that at this point. Similar, um, proposal for the current courtroom 202, which is a, a rather small, uh, smaller courtroom. It also is, it abuts a, the current jury assembly room that was constructed, uh, a couple of years ago. Um, you, you add, you, uh, combine that space and obviously you have the potential for a larger courtroom, but also depending on how you set that up, if you, uh, uh, added a, a retractable wall or something that could be, could be moved, you could have dual uses there where you, you could have a, uh, if, if you needed a larger jury assembly room, uh, you, you could do that. If you needed a larger courtroom, uh, you would, you would have that, that option potentially. Or if you needed the, the, uh, the smaller courtroom and the jury assembly room, you could have, have that. Um, I, uh, again, that, that is another one where we've reached out to a local architect, uh, for, uh, a cost estimate on making that, uh, remodel. I don't have that yet, but I expect to have that figure, uh, prior to the submission deadline of Wednesday afternoon. Uh, commissioners, that is a lot of information. I understand that, uh, I'm, I'm providing to you. I think it, what, what I would look for is, is direction, uh, of what application you would like, uh, like me to put forth prior to the, to the deadline on Wednesday. And Mr. Chair, I know I, I've worked very closely with you through this process and, and so you may have additional thoughts you'd like to share with your colleagues.
Yes, Mr. Wilson, the last project we talked about, I'm just going to say this and I'm going to let it go, uh, is not motivated by me, but interestingly enough, that's the exact project I wanted us to build the first time. So I was right. Anyway, um, with that, commissioners, uh, looking for your guidance really as, as Mr. Wilson said, I, let me cut to the chase on this. Here's the reality. We've got 1.25 billion dollars that have been allocated to the state of North Dakota to allocate resources both state and locally to support what's going on within COVID. That number's been basically cut in half. Not basically, it's been cut in half because of unemployment needs legitimate, no matter what, things that are transpiring. We're then whittling those numbers down slowly till we get to local government, which is us and our friends in the city of Fargo, our friends in the city of West Fargo. And, uh, there is some money. It's going to be tens upon tens upon tens of millions of dollars. The concern is that if we wait, it's going to be gone within this first round, much like the initial payroll protection plan. If we don't submit now, the probability of us being able to submit later will be slim to none. The rumor is, here's me cutting for the chase. The rumor is tens of millions of dollars will be going to oil companies out west, not local governments, oil companies. And I'm struggling with us at local government level having issues which are clearly evident. We need to, we need to have social distancing. We need to modify our courtrooms, make sure we can, make sure our staff, our customers are safe. We need to fight for these resources. We need to fight for them now. If we wait, they'll be gone. And what I said very bluntly to my sheriff and my jail administrator and our county administrator is, we should not get our hopes up for the intake resources, but we need to be prepared and need to apply because we have City of Fargo, West Fargo PD, Marshal Service, county deputies. There's a lot of people that go through that jail. And if for whatever reason we have an incident, if we recall, we had one maybe, right when we first had this situation occur, the situation meaning the pandemic, that could have been very, very bad for a number of jurisdictions. The intent on that intake is A, we need it. B, clearly, we need it before as well. We don't suddenly need it now. We needed it before. But then we add the, the complexity of what we're all going through as both, as I said, employees and customers, this becomes an absolute no-brainer to apply for this money. So, uh, I'm going to stop there. But I think that we, we need to apply for everything that we can get right now. Be prepared for a no, but be ready for a yes and, uh, proceed accordingly. So I'll stop. Commissioners, any thoughts?
So this is Commissioner Pollak speaking. Um, the only thing that I have a little pause about is to remodel the courtrooms that, that the court doesn't want remodeled, which is the, the last bullet point on, on the second page. I, I could see combining the jury assembly room and courtroom 202, but if they're saying we don't know how we could get by by combining 303 and 304 into a single larger courtroom, I don't know why we would want to even be pointing in that direction.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, I will be as blunt on this as I, as I can. I, I am hearing different opinions on that. And, and I, and there are, there are two schools of thought. One is that this does, uh, provide the ability for larger courtrooms and the ability to better socially distance. And I'm hearing another school of thought that, um, that we need not reduce the number of courtrooms we have. So I, I don't, uh, I, I don't believe either, either opinion is wrong, uh, but I, I am, I am hearing two, uh, two opinions on that.
We spent a lot of money to increase the number of courtrooms that were available. I would think we're going in the wrong direction if we started reducing them.
Further discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Shurling.
Uh, could we ask, uh, our state's attorney to weigh in on that?
Mr. Burdick, I see you. I know you're there. Give us your thoughts.
I am here. Uh, before I started practicing here, I think 303 and 304 were one courtroom. It was the major courtroom. When they needed more courtrooms, they split that into two courtrooms. As, uh, Mr. Wilson mentioned earlier, they are small, not particularly attractive. They are functional for small, small courtroom processes. You can put a jury in each one of those rooms, uh, but it's, it's a packed space for sure. But I, I, I'm, I'm fairly confident as, as Commissioner Pollak was essentially saying, that if you combine two of those courtrooms together, you will get a, a courtroom that is more usable for a variety of purposes, but you can anticipate shortly thereafter a clamor from the court for more courtrooms because they're going to need more rooms to hold hearings, uh, and other things. That would be what I would guess. Now, right now, we don't, in the criminal side, don't practice in those courtrooms you're talking about. We're over in the new wing and I'm glad to be there. But, uh, if, if you combine those together, uh, I expect that that would be the problem that would come thereafter. We need more courtrooms. But I, you, you'd really need to hear that from the judges, but this is what I would anticipate.
Thank you, Mr. Burdick. Mr. Wilson, any thoughts? Mr. Wilson, any thoughts?
I have no additional thoughts. I guess what I would look for is direction from the board. If there are any of these proposals that you would like us to not submit for funding, otherwise we would look to submit all of the proposals as they have been reviewed with, as I've reviewed them with you.
Do you want a motion to go forward on that?
Commissioner Pollak, he asked me one second though, sir. The one question I have is, we're adding bald cells, negative airflow. Is there a possibility at all to add more?
I did have a bit of a back and forth with Captain Frobig about this and said, what is your request, what of the options that the mechanical engineer laid out for us and the feedback that we get, what are you, what would you like to pursue? And this is the answer that I got.
So Captain Frobig's happy, that means we're happy. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Pollak, that's all I had.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Breitling?
Yes, it seems to me that there's no harm in asking. It would be a high-class worry if we had to make a decision later on between splitting those, making those two courtrooms one and adding some additional courtroom space elsewhere. That's a high-class worry. There's no harm in asking for this expenditure. The worst that can happen is we get turned down.
Thank you, sir.
And we're not going to get it all anyway.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yeah, I move that Robert be authorized to submit the list that he's presented.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any discussion on the motion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yes.
Steen?
Commissioner Steen has stepped, for those of you online, Commissioner Steen has stepped out.
Okay. Scherling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the amended item 3B, as you are aware, Mr. Wilson?
Forgive me, can I give you two other very quick COVID updates?
Yes, oh, sorry.
Before you move on. The department heads had originally, at the beginning of this time, had been meeting daily. We had later moved to meeting twice a week. Moving forward, we are going to be meeting once a week. And again, that is the, just reflecting that while there's still plenty to do, it's not, things in many ways are not moving as fast as they were at first. So that's just an update. A second update is that I have a request or a recommendation from the Court Security Division that, understanding that the court looks to get back to a more normal court schedule by June 15th, and the request is that at that time, we drop the open by appointment only status of county buildings. So that would be, that would be my intent to make that policy change, absent hearing direction from this board otherwise.
On what date, Mr. Wilson?
Monday, June 15th, two weeks from today.
Commissioners, your thoughts?
Commissioner Pollak speaking. I think it's okay to go ahead and make it, but give yourself plenty of time. So in other words, make it on a Thursday or a Friday in case conditions merit a change in what we're thinking.
Are you, just for my own clarification, are you saying make that change to our practice prior to the Monday when they are going to be back to full speed?
Yeah, prior to when they need it, because we don't really know what conditions on the ground we're really going to be in 10 days. We're assuming that they'll be, continue to improve. But in the event that they're not, and you need to go a different direction, it's easier to not have given it in the first place.
Mr. Chairman?
Scherling?
The, as I understood, Mr. Wilson's request was that all the government buildings be open so that you don't have to have appointments anymore. Why do we need to say all? Why can't we simply say the courthouse where the judges will be holding court?
Certainly could do that. We could say courthouse and annex, where we do have some entering there and going back and forth on the skybridge. I would link those two as long between the two buildings is open, but certainly we could do only courthouse, could do, there are different options we could utilize there.
Yeah, well, let's just not get ahead of ourselves, that's all. Whatever we need to do, let's go ahead and do it, but let's not say today that what we're doing in two weeks.
Understand.
Wilson, anything further?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, with that, item 3B, emergency declaration for civil unrest. As most of you probably well know, I signed an emergency declaration a couple days ago with my partners with emergency services, with our state's attorney, with our governor's office, with obviously our administration here. I wanted to make sure it was legal before I did anything, and I was assured through Mr. Burdick and the team that I'm not going to get in trouble. So I could talk your ear off about this, and I think it's probably best that it's almost 6:00, that I not do that right now. But suffice it to say, things were rambunctious for one evening, then died off as a number of the people that were instigating this left for our friends in Sioux Falls. It's a remarkable thing that we got to watch Mr. Wilson and I and Mr. Prochniak up at the LEC in our tactical operations center. It's an amazing thing to watch the coordination between all our divisions of local government, law enforcement agencies, fire protection, public service, generally speaking, of what all went down and why it went down. And the fact that it was essentially a coordinated effort by people that aren't from here. And the fact that that's a real thing shocked me. You sort of hear about that, I listen to a lot, I don't sleep a whole heck of a lot, so I listen to a lot of late night radio, conspiracy type things. So you take them with a grain of salt. You say, yeah, there's always a bit of truth in comedy, there's a bit of truth in the stories you hear online, but most of it's all fodder and fluff. There were some bad people in town who were intending on doing bad things with our local population, and it was an amazing thing, like I said, to watch. But quick summary, we got through it. Emergency declaration, for all intents and purposes, will expire on its own within seven days, so there's no real action needed from this board. The guard, I think, is probably demobilized by now, I don't know that for sure. Coincidentally, we had 250 military police in town, which some say was strategically planned, others think it was happy coincidence, I don't know, but they were here and we utilized them. And we were ready. We were ready for what was coming ahead of time. And I don't know if you watched my little spiel here a couple days ago, or yesterday, whenever it was, that we were all congratulating ourselves on a good job. And I had read an editorial that sort of made fun of us for that, but the reality is, that's true. We did some remarkable things with what could have been a very bad situation, and we did them on the fly. It speaks to the skill set of everyone we have working for us, it speaks to the communications local leaders have. I was texting them, my first text came from the governor the day before at 2:00 in the morning, and like I said, I don't sleep, so I actually texted him back immediately. And it was better from there. So to let you know that state, local, county, and city cooperated as well as one could hope, better in fact, and I think, as hopeful as I was, better than I was thinking it was going to go due to the moving ball, the moving target that we had the whole time. So like I said, there's no action needed, I signed it, it's going to expire, we did well, and it could have been far worse. So commissioners, do you have any questions for me? If not, I'll move on to item four. Fund diversion transfer South Act dollars, Mr. Mount Pleasure?
You have the report in front of you with the motion. The only thing to note is that our sales tax have been holding up pretty good. The last 12 months have been 5.5%, 5.55% higher than the previous 12 months, which is good. We keep that kind of running total just to see how we're doing. That, however, may start decreasing with the drop in sales I expect from the COVID activities.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollak speaking. I move to authorize the county finance director to transfer $1,215,487 and 70 cents to the City of Fargo as a physical agent for the FM diversion authority.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Scherling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item six, or item five, sorry, vouchers, Mr. Commissioner Breitling?
I have a question of Mr. Mount Pleasure. In the, it's not important, but there are nine consecutive expenditures by Human Services that are designated as ABC Sandcastle. Do you know, they're small amounts, but do you know what that is? That's on page 15.
Mr. Mount Pleasure is pulling his packet up.
Those are for primetime childcare, and they're back.
Oh, you broke up, Mike.
They're for primetime childcare, and they're for a series of different months that they just got the bills in for a number of months, going back to sometime in 19.
I have no problems with the bills as presented in the copy that I have. I do, I would mention that the road department has had some large expenditures in this amongst bills, but it's primarily due to the fact that the weather is such and that school closings have allowed for the old temp work from Castleton coming over towards Mapleton to take big steps, and it's been expensive. And also with the school routes closing, the bridge over the Cheyenne River west of, just west of Harwood, has also been basically completed by industrial builders. Just some information of a general sense, but with that, I would move that the bills be approved and paid.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Scherling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Committee reports, Mr. Burdick, you're first.
Sure, thanks. Notwithstanding your comment about how everybody moved off to Sioux Falls, there were at least nine people who did not. And they visited our facility here and spent a little time. And we charged nine different people, seven of them with misdemeanors, engaging in a riot, preventing arrests, disobedience of public safety orders during a riot, that sort of thing, all those were misdemeanors. We had two who we charged with felonies, and they became felonies because one of them had a dangerous weapon with him at the time, a gun. He wasn't brandishing the gun, but carrying the gun, as I understand it. And another one who had, oddly enough, jumped on top of a squad car and done damage to the squad car while there were two officers in the squad car. So he didn't get very far with that. Those last two, interestingly enough, I don't know that it's true for the others, and I'm not sure quite why, but the bail that was set on those last two, the two felonies, were $50,000 cash or bond and a waiver of extradition from California. So I don't know how long ago they had been in California. I haven't looked at all the police reports, but I did get that off the court data this afternoon. So that's, oh, one other thing, at least two of the judges, and I think they're standing alone amongst the nine, are planning on handling their hearings, one next week and one two weeks after that remotely. We'll see how that all works, but they're interested in the technology of it and going to try and do things that way at least for now. Judge Raisik, who's having his hearings this week, is not, and as far as I know, the hearings two weeks from now will not be remotely. We'll see how all that works out. That's it.
Thanks, Mr. Burdick. Commissioner Pollak?
Sorry, no report, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson? No report? Thank you. Commissioner Breitling?
No report.
Commissioner Scherling?
Thank you. Just very briefly, Fargo planning tomorrow, International Red River Basin this week. And just a heads up, I think our sheriff is on here, but needless to say, they've been very, very busy between the jail and people testing positive, and then people not testing positive, and riots, and so on and so forth. So they're going to be looking at some overtime, so just a friendly heads up.
Anything further, Commissioner?
Actually, just want to thank you, Chad, for putting in extra time you've done the last few months. I know it's been a heavy lift, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson says he's doubling my overtime, so I'm pretty happy about that.
That extra $100 a month goes a long ways.
Amen. Get to me this water bottle, you can see my screen, I can afford that extra water bottle a year. Thank you. Mr. Mount Pleasure?
Just that we've got the election ongoing, you know, this is going to be one for the record books. We have sent out 35,448 ballots so far, and we've gotten back in a little over 11,000, about 32% of them. So we're still getting several hundred applications a day.
That is good news. Anything further, sir?
That's it.
Okay. Me, we've been busy doing all sorts of fun things, and I think it's 6:00, so if you want to learn about that, you can call me later, we can talk some other time. It's been an exciting couple months.
What should we call you?
Not very smart, but we're lucky to be here, and it's sort of said tongue in cheek, right? But we're lucky to be here, I think, like I said, this, knowing, and you've heard me say this before, and I mean it so sincerely, the exposure I've had to our peers outside of North Dakota in terms of the stresses they put themselves under because of politics, because of control issues, because of all sorts of things, this could be much, much harder than it is because they start making things needlessly complex so they can get themselves in the paper or get themselves to credit, and we just don't do a whole heck of a lot of that here. So it's as good as it could possibly be, and I'll stop there. Thank you, everyone. Correspondents?
Correspondents received as of June 1, 2020, a notice from City of Fargo Planning regarding a public hearing to be held June 2nd, consider a zone change from multi-dwelling residential to general commercial for a tract located at 113 and 123 10th Street South and 1013, 1015, and 1019 Second Avenue South.
Move to receive and file.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Item eight?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If you stand adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Everybody later.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Take care.